And we are, sorry, Your Honor. I'm. We're going to call our meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 28th, and we're going to ask for Landon Hayes from the Church of the Heights. Is he here? Good. Please come up and do our invocation. Commissioner Pickens will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. All rise if you're able to do so.
All right, let's pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you this morning as we're about to commence the deliberation of the business of our county. And Jesus, I just pray that you remind us that your word says, "The trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding." That's what we want to do this morning, God. I pray you would just provide us with wisdom, guidance, and discernment just to make the best decisions for the edification of this county and its citizens, Lord. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes, and thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Next item on our agenda is our approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting minutes, updated April 23rd, 2024.
Proper motion, proper seconding for the discussion on the motion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Our next presentation will be from, our proclamation will be Commissioner Pickens. And Judge Morris, if you want to come up and bring your group up, Commissioner Pickens will read the proclamation and then interact at that point.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Harding. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2024-053, National Drug Court Month. Whereas treatment courts have been restoring lives and families for more than three decades, and whereas there are nearly 4,000 treatment courts nationwide, and whereas treatment courts have served more than 1.5 million individuals, and whereas they are now recognized as the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history, and whereas they save an average of $6,000 for every individual they serve, and where treatments courts significantly improve substance and use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy. Whereas treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, financial stability, promote family unification, reduce foster care placements, and increase the rate of addicted mothers delivering babies who are fully drug-free, and whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. Whereas treatment courts demonstrate, when one person rises out of substance use and crime, we all rise. Therefore, be it resolved that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners declare the Drug Court Month, the established during the month of May, done, ordered, and adopted this 28th day of May, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
We have proper motion, proper seconding for the discussion on the motion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it.
All right. Okay. Thank you again for having us. I don't know if you all know, but I believe this is the 24th year of Putnam County's adult felony drug court. So it's been going on for quite some time. Judge Art Nichols began drug court about 24 years ago, and I've been the presiding judge for the last 14 years after he retired. But drug court is my passion. It's the thing that I love the most about my job. When I walk into my meetings in court every Wednesday morning, I'm a happy camper. So, and I love trying to help these folks change their life and turn their life around. I just lead a team of people that work diligently every day with these folks to help them learn the skills and the tools that they need to be a productive member of our society. So I want to take this opportunity to introduce to you the drug court team that works with these folks. If I call your name, please stand up. We have Ms. Jackie Pollak. She is our drug court coordinator. We have Ms. Amber Moskell. Ms. Amber Moskell is an Assistant Public Defender. We work with the Public Defender and the State Attorney's Office. We have Sam Frazier, who's an Assistant State Attorney back here. We have Vanessa Struck, who is our probation officer. And last but not least, we have Ms. Suzette Young. She is our Senior Drug Court Counselor. She's a very important part of our group, and as you see, it takes everybody coming together, all of the agencies work together, to try to make drug court as good a program as it can be. This is what happens in drug court. People plead into drug court after they've been charged with a felony. They can spend anywhere from about 16, 18 months, up to three years in our program. And it's kind of a, I call it a work at your own pace. Some people can get through it in 18 months, some people need two and a half years, and so you just take whatever time you need. That's why we give you up to three years to complete it. We have a recidivism rate that's under 10%. That means that people that graduate from our drug court, probably less than, you know, two or three of them a year, go back and commit other crimes and get arrested again. So I'm really proud of that. One of the other things they do is, in drug court, thanks to y'all's funding of this program and continued funding, our folks give back 140 hours at a minimum of community service while they're in drug court. Most of them do vastly more than that, but that is the minimum that they have to complete in order to complete the program. So, you know, it is a, I just can't say enough good things about it. I've just seen folks whose lives have been completely turned around. We have a young lady that's going to talk this morning, and I can tell you that she just looks like a completely different human being today than she did when she participated in drug court a few years ago. She graduated a few years ago and has a lot of recovery days under her belt. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to, I've got two or three people that have come up, say three or four sentences, and then we'll be out of your hair. All right, Ridge, you want to come on up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I don't have a speech or nothing. I'm just going to give y'all's my experience of it. Before drug court, I was using criminal activity for 10 years. So when I pled into drug court, it was a point in my life where I wanted to choose to either do the right thing or do the wrong thing. And man, I can't say anything bad about drug court. Ever since I've been in, since day one, I had no car, no license, no place to live. I have a place to live, my license, my truck, a good job, a high-paying job, and everything's just coming together. And I think drug court's one of those things where it shows you what life is, normal and sober, being a part of society, and it really changes you. So if I can do it, I feel like anybody can do it. And it's just, it's a great program. I love every step of it, and, you know, I can't, I can't be more thankful of it. So I just want to say I'm grateful for this program, and it's changed my life in the short amount of time I've been in there. But I know it's going to keep changing my life as I go on in life. Everybody's great, and they're super caring, and like, when you go to court, it's not like normal court, you know? They actually care about you, and it's, it's just an amazing experience. So that's what I want to say about it.
Thank you.
Travis, you're next.
Like Ridge, I didn't really prepare a speech or anything. For the past 20 years, I've been, you know, willing and dealing in criminal activity and drug use, and since I've entered the program, my life has done a complete 360. I'm almost six months clean, and, you know, just one day at a time, I'm taking it. But this program has taught me skills, I'm 34 years old, that I never had in my life. And I'm not ashamed to admit that. It's just, you know, it's been a journey, and I look forward to progressing in my recovery and seeing where this road takes me. It's been real nice.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just a little aside before, you know, Ashley comes up here. Our approach to drug court, I call it the whole life approach, because we're not just going to ask these folks to come in on, you know, any given day and give us a clean drug screen. We ask them to participate in their community, to get a job, to learn how to budget their money, to learn how to address issues and stressors that come up in their life. So it's a whole life approach. It's not just, you know, give me a clean drug screen, and I'll give you a certificate, you know, at the end of the deal. All right, so our last person to speak is Ashley.
Good morning, Ash. Good morning. Okay, so I have two years and eight months sober, and without this program, I was in and out of jail. I didn't have custody of my kids. I lost track of everything that had to do with life, with myself, with just living. If it wasn't for an amazing judge, a counselor, I didn't deal with the other, Jackie, and then when I was in drug court. But if it wasn't for them not giving up on me and showing me how to love myself again, I would never be here. Unfortunately, it did take me longer. I had to go to the rehab, and that completely changed my life. It also helped me get the tools I needed and just helped me keep moving forward. And I have a, I work at Beck Automotive now. I have a vehicle. Heck, I even have a motorcycle now. I never thought in a million years I would have this, you know, these personal belongings. I have my kids back. I have a great relationship with all of my family. I have sober friends, and I learned to stay away from the people, places, and things, and that's what keeps me going. And I wouldn't be here without the drug court team. So, thank you.
All right, so just wanted to give y'all a little flavor of what our successes are with different people in different stages. And, you know, you, if you come to any drug court graduations, you'll hear these same conversations over and over and over again about how meaningful drug court is and how it's helped people change their life. And I'm here today to accept this proclamation, but also to thank the County Commission for the funding that y'all provide to continue to support what I think is a very worthwhile program, and I think y'all will, I hope y'all will continue to do so. Thank you much, very much for having us. Y'all have a great day. Any of you that are willing to be in a photograph, come on forward. If I can be in it, y'all can be in it.
If we could get some on this side, and if we could get you gentlemen to go up on
Judge Morris, before you leave and your group, when I heard you were coming, that always, that brought a big smile to my face, because since I've been on this board, and every year, seeing the success stories that come across, and seeing people's lives that are changed in a positive direction, what more could we want in this community than that?
Really, yeah.
And people, everybody wants something different, but lives are important, and they're worthy to be changed. And some of y'all are going to be sitting up here one day, governing and remember what you went through, because somebody needs your help too. So thank you so much, Judge Morris.
Yeah, they're all very good about paying it forward. I don't have any problem with that, and I invite all of y'all to come to a drug court graduation. They are very moving, and the first drug court graduation I went to, I had not counseled one person on that drug that was graduating, but I cried through the entire thing. It was just so moving. So I encourage you to come to a drug court. If you're interested in knowing when we have one, just contact Jackie Pollak, our drug court coordinator, and she'll put you on our email so that you can come visit us when we see the end of these success stories. We usually partner with Life Church. They support us, and they do all of our graduations, feed us a meal. Amber Gilbert and Ronnie and all the other folks down at Life Church, I forgot to mention them, but they are great partners with drug court, and I appreciate their help. Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
If I can just jump one thing. So, you know, I was actually part of the, I was a founding member of the dependency drug court down in Broward County. And then after becoming a prosecutor and as a defense attorney, I would recommend and try to advocate for my clients to go to drug court, because it was a better legal alternative. And it wasn't until I had a friend of mine that was in a similar situation that I was helping, I was helping him pro bono. But watching him go through that, we see the success stories, but I don't think I can communicate how difficult that road is. And, you know, for people that are entering drug court, this is not traditionally their first time with addiction recovery. My friend actually, as he entered the program, told me afterwards, he's like, you know what? I've been to so many AA, NA, I've been to so many substance abuse evaluations. He thought he was just going to game them and tell them what they wanted to hear. His analogy to me was, you know, it's the difference between going to a class and you hear something, and, you know, you can learn going to school, but he said, drug court's like going to an internship. And as part of the internship, you have to live it, and having that support there is really the make or break from what I've seen with the success. And it took him a year and a half, but he speaks even years later now about, you hear the term "tools," and I feel like that kind of gets brushed to the side, but he learned to break the cycle, which is the critical point in how you just don't end up in that situation again. He's never been arrested again to that. So the value of that, I agree with Judge Morris. If you can go watch one of the, you know what, not even the graduation, go drop in for one of the drug court court hearings and see the interaction. If that doesn't profoundly change your view on it, I'll be surprised.
Yeah, Wednesday morning, 10:30. We do drug court every Wednesday morning at 10:30, courtroom 302. So feel free to join us. Thank you, Mr. Commando, for those, you know, kind comments, and I couldn't agree with more with anything you said. I mean, these folks back here will tell you, this program is intense. When they come in on day one, we become, you know, like a demanding overseer for a while. And, you know, through, throughout drug court, we kind of back off, back off, back off, and start letting them have, you know, a lot more control. But one of the last things I want to leave you with, with regard to drug court, think about if you came down to see me next week in my courtroom, and the first thing I said to you was, I want you to be honest. I want you to be honest with me and the drug court team, but mostly, I want you to be honest with yourself. I want you to open that book of life, look in the mirror at that person, and say, you know, what things do I want to change? What things do I like and want to boost, and what things absolutely have to go? Then the biggie that I tell them, you got to change all your people, places, and things. And I analogize this. If somebody came to me and said, all right, in the morning, Judge Morris, you have to go to different places, hang out with different people, and do different things, that would be tough. I mean, that's a tough ask for anybody. So they do a lot of deep, hard work, and phase one of drug court is super intensive. So they have to get organized pretty quick to manage it. But again, that's one of the things we teach, organization, time management, money management. I mean, you name it, we touch on it somewhere or other. So again, thank you for having us. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. We'll give you a few minutes to clear out. I'm sure you.
We're all off to work.
All right. Yeah. I'll do the next one. Yeah. Commissioners, keeping on with our agenda, I'd like to call great friend of ours in Putnam County, Mr. Mickey Thomason, up to the podium with me. And if you don't know Mickey, Mickey is in charge of Greenways and Trails for the corridor, I guess from, from the.
Gulf of Mexico.
Right, to the St. John's River. It's a big area, and he's, he has managed that for a long time. And Mickey is retiring. His last day will be this coming Friday, and I'll let him speak about it. But I do want to say, Mickey, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we want to present to you a certificate of appreciation for your invaluable service, significant contributions to Putnam County, particularly in advancing ecotourism and effectively environmental land management. Mickey, on behalf of the board, thank you for all your years of service to Putnam County and to the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and the recognition I very much appreciate. And also want to thank you all for the partnerships. We've got four different counties, Putnam being at the easternmost end of the Greenway, but we appreciate all the partnership efforts working with the county and everything you all do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to come up and say anything?
This is my supervisor, Jennifer Roberts. She's the Assistant Bureau Chief of District 3 of the Florida State Park Service.
Yes, good morning, and I just want to say thank you for appreciating and recognizing Mickey for his contributions, and he absolutely will be missed. He's a really valuable part of the Greenway, and when we think about the Greenway, we think about Mickey. So thank you for recognizing him.
And Mickey, before you leave, I want to say, I said this to you earlier, you took a very complex issue here in Putnam County. You always divided the baby right down the middle, and I shouldn't probably say it that way, but, you know, you walked the fine line of what's good for the environment, what's good for the people. And, and I appreciated that. I really, really did. Working with you all these years, you're just a man of your word and a man of honor, and I, we're going to miss you a lot out there. So hopefully that'll, some of your knowledge will still be around if somebody needs it. Thank you, sir. Have a great day. Next is our proclamation, Emergency Medical Services, and Commissioner Wilkinson will be reading that.
Thank you, Chair. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2024-054, Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical professionals and volunteers provide medical care to victims of sudden, life-threatening injuries and illnesses, often under stressful conditions and in high-risk situations to save lives. And whereas Florida's residents and visitors benefit daily from the knowledge, skill, and judgment of paramedics, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, and others who encompass the emergency medical services system. And whereas, emergency medical personnel must rapidly assess, manage, and effectively provide care in unpredictable situations requiring life and death judgments. And whereas, Florida's EMS teams unselfishly serve on the front line of healthcare when responding to man-made and natural disasters at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas, it is critical the general public be made aware of, understand, support, and effectively use its local emergency medical services system. And whereas, recognition is due for the emergency medical system for its accomplishments and contributions to improve public welfare through healthcare, medical transportation, injury prevention, education, disaster response, homeland security, and other initiatives that reduce healthcare costs and save lives. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the week of May 19th through 25, 2024, is declared Emergency Medical Services Week in Putnam County, and that all citizens are encouraged to take part in recognizing the hard work and dedicated services provided by all personnel providing emergency medical services, done, ordered, and adopted this 28th day of May, 2024. Mr. Chair, I move, I make a motion to move approval for proclamation number 2024-054.
We have proper motion, proper seconding for the discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Y'all want to come up here? Or you got anything you want to say? Yep.
Just real quick, I just want to say how proud I am of the team that worked, I work with. They don't work for me. I work with them every day. I believe Putnam County has some of the best firefighter, EMTs, and paramedics anywhere in the state of Florida.
Agreed. Oh, there she is. I was looking for her. Do you want to stand up?
Three, two, one. All right. Stay, don't move.
Before we go on to our next one, I do want to recognize the Mayor of Palac, Mr. Robbie Carreras here in the House today. Welcome to it. Welcome to the Putnam County Chamber. Figure that one out, don't we? Okay. Next, Commissioner Adamsack, if you'll read the proclamation for Memorial Day.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 24-055, Memorial Day 2024. Whereas Memorial Day is a day of solemn remembrance for the men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to our nation. And whereas, throughout our history, brave individuals have answered the call of duty, placing their lives in harm's way to protect the freedoms and values we hold dear. And whereas, on this day, we honor the memory of those who gave their lives in defense of our country, reflecting upon their courage, selflessness, and unwavering commitment to duty. And whereas, we express our deepest gratitude to the families of fallen heroes, recognizing their sacrifice and resilience, and offering our unwavering support and solidarity. And whereas, as a nation, we renew our pledge to never forget the sacrifices of our fallen heroes, to uphold the principles for which they fought, and to strive for a world of peace and justice for all. peace and justice for all. Therefore be it resolved that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners proclaim May 27, 2024, as Memorial Day in Putnam County, and call upon all citizens to observe this day with reverence and respect, honoring the memory of our fallen heroes, and reflecting on the profound debt of gratitude we owe them. Done, ordered, and adopted on the 28th day of May 2024. Chairman and I move that we approve Putnam County Proclamation Number 2024-055.
Proper motion, proper second here. Any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Want to say a few words?
So yesterday I was at the celebration and everything, and we had a retired Colonel up there. He pretty much said everything that we need to, which is remember the families that are still around after our soldiers and sailors have fallen. So definitely Gold Star families, things like that. I know that the FDVA just started a Gold Star neighborhood down in Broward County. I don't know if you understand what a Gold Star is, but that's anybody that's fallen.
Sure.
So yeah, they're starting a whole neighborhood of that. And I'm like, hey, that's someone we need to be a part of. So yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
We'll go and get a picture. All right. Next one is a big one, right, Wendy? You want to come up? And Wendy has a presentation honoring one of our local residents, farmers, and all-around good guy.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. It's wonderful. It's always a pleasure to be here. I have very, very good news for y'all today. We've got the face of agriculture, Putnam County, Larry Korn with us today. Larry, come on up with me. Larry graduated high school in 1961 and has been farming full-time Putnam County ever since he graduated. But when I say, what's your earliest memory following that, you know, that clear, the land clearing that his dad was doing and watching his dad clear the land, even when he was just a child? And what we have now in Putnam County, I mean, L&amp;M, I mean, that was Larry and his dad bringing L&amp;M to us. And, you know, they started clearing land, 200 acres started, four years later had 900 acres, and they were the ones that drew McGee and them in to come to Putnam County. And now Larry, 72, 72? Yeah, maybe 73. Anyway, he is still managing 2,000 acres throughout the tri-county area and knows every little piece of soil, whatever the ground can do, he knows what the ground can do, and he's just been on top of things. And Larry, even though he has the experience, he is continuing to embrace everything that's happening in agriculture. AI and drone technology and soil moisture sensors, and we celebrate him. Today, what he's receiving is the Product of Putnam Award. This is from the school district. Through agriculture, Larry received this award this month. But I'm also pleased to tell you guys that he's also received the Agriculturalist of the Year for the whole state of Florida through the University of Florida IFES. We have a, yes. So I'm going to let Larry just say a few words because he really is a legend in Putnam County, and he has contributed so much to our agricultural landscape. Larry, you got something to say?
Thank you. It's an honor to still be farming at 72. I'm the manager of a pretty good-sized farm and, of course, farmed myself for years with my partner Joe McGee. And I started out, I even put up fence with Terry Turner for so many years. I think that's why I'm a halfway decent farmer. We learned some hard work, and that's what pays off. The only thing I got to say, the youth in our county, I hope you guys keep some of our land and farmland because since this water and sewer deal's going on, I'm plugging something I probably shouldn't be saying here, but our youth has got to have a place to farm, and our families are getting, our family farms are getting smaller and smaller. So I know progress is coming and nothing we can do about it, but I hope that y'all will consider keeping some of us in some farmland. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Picture. Can you hold that?
Larry, before you come up here and take a picture, it's my turn. Larry, like Larry said, we've known each other since we were teenagers.
Yeah.
And I can't think of a more deserving person for this award today. Congratulations.
That means a lot. Thank you.
Get right up here. And if you'll take one with my side, too. Don't move. Just. Three, two, one. All right. Okay.
All that deserves this award for flipping up with you.
So we have our next item on the agenda is our nine o'clock Planning and Development Public Hearing. Item A, vested right determination, V23-00004, Resolution 2024-056. Mr. Baker, you have the floor, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. It's been a while, and we'll try and knock off the cobwebs this morning. The applicant is Maurice Krasnicki. This is a parcel of land located in East Palaca on East McCormick Road. The purpose is to obtain a vesting determination for a single parcel of land. The subject parcel is product of an illegal lot split resulting in the creation of two non-conforming lots in 2007. The resultant lots comply with the minimum dimensional requirements of the agriculture zoning district. However, they do not comply with the residential density requirements of the agriculture future land use category. The adjacent parcel listed here is developed with a single-family residence, which allows that property to be considered a lot of record pursuant to LDC Section 45796. Therefore, a vesting determination is not required for that adjoining parcel, only the one in consideration today. A Lot Inquire Response Letter dated 2018 verified that the subject property was unbuildable due to this illegal division of land. Current property owner acquired the parcel in 2023 and was advised that he could not build on it. 45-801 of the Land Development Code provides the vesting criteria. Furthermore, 801C kind of goes on to explain, you know, what equitable esoppel is and when vestings are to be considered. Here you can see an outline of that subject parcel. It's kind of an unusual L-shaped. Nonetheless, it still conforms with the zoning district dimensional requirements. This would depict the future land use being agriculture. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the zoning. And here we have the future land use of agriculture. I zoomed out a little bit so you can see that urban service and rural residential, both much higher residential density land uses are within close proximity of this parcel. And via this map, you can see that there's a few other parcels immediately adjacent that are also the same size. The property owner legally obtained the property with the impression that it could be developed upon contacting Planning and Development. The property owner was advised of the non-conforming status of the parcel due to the illegal division in 2007. Property was created without the benefit of a lot split review after the establishment of the comprehensive plan. Subject parcel exceeds the residential density requirements of one dwelling unit per five acres, given the property abuts and has access to a county-maintained road. Parcel would have been approved if the property was split in conjunction with a residential family member density exception. Staff is unable to administratively vest the parcel since it was created after December 19th, 1991, and was not created through a lawful lot split. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution vesting the subject parcel as depicted on Exhibit A and described in Exhibit B of the accompanying resolution. I'll take any questions.
Mr. Turner, you have a question, sir?
Commissioners, this is one of those cases right here that we've got to figure out how to fix.
Agreed.
This is ones here that make my blood boil. 1.2 acres in an area that's already clearly residential. I know it's the future land use as ag, but it's clearly residential. And I'm not giving this to staff. They're doing what they have to do because this is what our land code says. We've got to fix this. This piece of property's been tied up since 2018. Somebody bought it in '23 thinking they could build on it, and now that it's '24 that they're trying to get where they can build on it? Clearly, clearly, this is a residential piece of property next to a residential piece of property on the side of a county road. Why? We've got to fix this somehow. I don't know what the suggestion is, but I'm going to say, I'm going to ask Zach, I'm going to task you, Zach, to try to come up with a recommendation on how this could be done with it not taking five years. We're fixing to redo the land code. It's coming to us at the next meeting. We can still add something to it. This would be a perfect example of when to try to fix something if we could. We need this to either go to the ADC if that passes, or we need to go, or the ARC if it passes, or staff do it or something. This is a no-brainer. There's no reason in putting a citizen through this. No reason whatsoever, other than we have to because that's what it says. Let's make it say something else and do away with these kind of problems. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? This is a public hearing, so is the applicant here? I don't see the applicant. Is anyone here to speak in favor or against this application? Please rise. And seeing no one rise up to that, we will close the public hearing part.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Turner?
I move that we accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and we approve this vesting.
Second.
Do you have to read the resolution into your?
Okay, a resolution number 2024-056.
Correct.
Resolution by the, a resolution of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners providing for a vested rights determination for property located at 230 East McCormick Road, East Palaca, Florida, 32131, case number V23-000004.
Second.
Might have too many zeros, but we'll figure it out. Not a problem, the resolution. We have a proper motion, a proper second. Any further discussion on a motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Next item is our PUD 24-000012 Valentine. Jennifer, you got that?
Good morning. For the record, Jennifer Gassalo. This application is to amend the existing plan unit development PUD ordinance 2023-004. The applicant is Keith and Joyce Valentine. The parcel is 34.75 acre, located at 145, 163, and 162 Willis Road, located off US-19. The applicant is requesting to amend the existing 34.75 acre PUD to add 16 more RV sites and to reduce the setbacks to 10 feet on the sides and the rear and 25 feet in the front. The parcel is designated agriculture on the adopted future land use map. The Trails and Outdoor PUD currently includes a mix of residential, commercial, and residential uses. Currently, the following uses exist on site: 44 RV sites, 10 primitive camping sites, three single-family residential units, resource-based and activity-based recreational uses, events including weddings, reunions, and retreats, equestrian uses, and agricultural uses. The Trails and Outdoor PUD consists of several parcels. Located on parcel ending in 0050 is the residence of the applicant. In 2023, the applicant processed an exempt subdivision to alter the boundary lines of parcels ending in 0050 and 0000. The applicant's request was approved to reconfigure those portions of the property. There is another single-family residence located on parcel ending in 0000. In 2016, parcel numbers 0020-0000 and 0020-0030 received a special use permit to allow for a landscaping business and an equestrian business. Parcel 0020-0030 was removed from the PUD development agreement and reverted back to the original agricultural zoning. Should this PUD amendment be approved, the applicant will then submit to Development Review Committee to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations as it pertains to this property. The DRC will ensure the placement of the RV lots is acceptable based on the development agreement, and the Florida Department of Health will review the plans for potable water and sanitary sewer. Other agencies, including but not limited to Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, St. John's River Water Management District, will review the plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. We have our aerial view, future land use, zoning, wetlands map. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the Trails and PUD to allow for an additional 16 recreational vehicle sites and to reduce the front setbacks to 25 feet and the sides and rear to 10 feet, as the request is consistent with the requirements for PUD zoning, consistent with the future land use designation, and consistent with other comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies. At the scheduled public hearing on April 10, 2024, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning application. This will have to go to another hearing, being said it's 34 acres. Any questions?
So basically, today we're just hearing it, and then we'll move it. We'll set a date and time for the next one.
Yes, sir.
Do want to say that on the directions, it is State Road 20, not US-19, that this property is located off. So just for the record, we need to clean that up. Commissioner Adamsack?
I just wanted to declare that I've had communications and visited the property, and I also had communications with some neighbors to Mr. Valentine, and it will not affect my vote.
Yeah, I need to call, I was going to call the ex parte in just a moment, but since we're there, Commissioner Turner, do you have any ex parte communication?
Yes, but it will not affect my decision.
Mr. Pickens?
Yes, I have. I've spoken with the owner.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes, I have, and I've visited the site.
And I have also visited the site, and it will not affect my decision-making at all. Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor?
Just a couple of questions. On your staff report, page 1 of 10, it says 165 Willis Road, and your program, in your PowerPoint, you said 162. Is it 162 or 165?
It's 163, 164, and 145. I may have misspoken.
So it's 163, 164?
163, 165, and 145.
Okay.
Okay, all right. And then another question is, the state legislature passed some ruling on agribusiness and agritourism. Does this property not, is it, is there some leniency, I guess, for some sort of for some sort of agribusiness and agritourism that was allowed at the Florida Legislature a couple of years ago, when that policy changed? Not to my knowledge.
To Commissioner Wilkinson, so that the agritourism changes to the statute dealt with the ability or the requirements to get building permits, it didn't affect land use and zoning?
Okay, all right, and then, I think I have one other question. We're talking about setbacks, so the, did the county require the setbacks? Or did the applicant set their original setbacks in their, in their original proposal at 25 feet, and now they're, now they're asking to change it to 10?
He set the original, and now he's requesting that they be reduced.
Well, I think that's very important for us to know, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions?
I have one.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
So we have to hear plan unit development adjustments more than once? I mean, that's one of the, I knew that you had determined that we had to do zoning, but, but just to amend the, the PUD, we have to hear that twice?
Yes.
Does it actually say that in the ordinance, or is it any land use change? I, I guess, I guess I need to talk about that again, because as you know, I think this is just ridiculous that we're having to do this, and I understand that, that you made the determination that we have to on some cases, but is it on anything we do that's over 10 acres?
I, I don't think it's anything you do, but, and I don't remember what the threshold, the threshold's changed for land use, I don't know that they changed for that, I think it's still 10. But for this, it's in statute, it's not in our ordinance.
Okay, so just to amend an existing PUD?
Yeah, it's a-
We have to hear it twice? I mean, I know we do zoning because you, I mean, you made that determination, brought it out, but when you read that, when you read that statute to us that day, I didn't catch any part of it that said that anything that you do that's 10 acres or more, it was basically if you changed the zoning on 10 acres or more, wasn't it?
A, a PUD is zoning, you're changing zoning from one to another, it's just you're changing the-
We're amending the PUD, we're not, they already have the PUD, they already have the zoning, we're just amending what they can do within the PUD that they already have. They're not expanding the PUD, they're expanding what they're doing within the PUD.
I agree, but when you're amending the PUD, you're, the technical process you're going through is you're amending from a PUD to a PUD. You're just, that's what changing the conditions does. So we would need a, if you want to have the hearing before 5 o'clock, you need the supermajority vote.
The, this is a public hearing, so we'll give the applicant, if they'd like to speak, to come up and-
Keith, I understand you're gonna have to do this again. This is just the in-between hearing, basically.
That's, that's okay. Keith Valentine, 165 Willis Road, Hollister.
Mr. Valentine, will you put that microphone right to your, there you go.
All right. Keith Valentine, 165 Willis Road in Hollister. Appreciate you letting us come back before you today. As it was said before, I set the original setbacks, and I don't know why I did, because that limited me to the very center of my ranch, and I didn't think about what I wanted to do for future. I set it, we have it from 100 feet to 10 foot, and the setbacks, just to let everybody know, on- People who come and visit is at the edges of the property, it spans it out. What's the great thing about this is we see people out there at the fence lines feeding cows and horses, and just gets to see what Putnam County's all about, and that's the great thing. We had 25 of the elite anglers who are here, and I tried to save the lower portion, closest to the cattle and the horses, for them, and they enjoyed it. So what I'm asking today is to let me go 10 foot off, and it keeps everything back from the fence lines, it's not against somebody's home or anything, but we originally still have it at the 25 feet out on Willis Road as the county requires, those setbacks. It's been a great thing for me and for Putnam County, it's been great. I just can't believe how things have happened for this and the positive effects that it has for the tourist development council and the people that come in. So I strongly urge you to let me go ahead and do our thing there. These extra sites are for the center of the property where it's an open area, so that the motor homes that come can do a pull-through, because all my sites are back end, and that's all that I knew how to do, but we have room for these new sites to be in the, closer to the center so that people can pull through, and buddy camp with each other, and I'm just asking you to allow us to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine, any questions? Okay, we'll move on, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that want to speak in favor or against this PUD? And seeing no one rise, then we will, we will get done with the public hearing part. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Yes, sir?
I move that we move this case forward to the next commission meeting to be heard at 9:30 in the morning or soon thereafter as possible.
A proper motion, do we have a second? We have a proper second, any further discussion on that motion, Mr. Adams, Zach?
Just want to state I will be voting no, only because of the time of the meeting, has nothing to do with the case.
Thank you, all right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it four to one, thank you very much. Next item is our rezoning, REZ 24-00001, Ocean Investments.
Again, for the record, Jennifer Gassell. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from Commercial General C3 to Commercial Intensive C4 to allow for manufactured housing sales and storage. The applicant is Ocean Investments, USA LLC, the agent is Jean Bramlett. Parcel is 0.68 acre parcel located at 1086 North Highway 17 in Palaca. The parcel is designated commercial on the adopted future land use map. The surrounding uses are mostly commercial retail C2, commercial neighborhood C1, and agriculture. The parcel is located at 1086 North Highway 16 in Palaca, and has approximately 460 feet of frontage on Highway 17. The parcel is currently developed with an approximate 840 square foot office. The parcel does not appear to contain wetlands, and is located in FEMA Flood Zone X, which is not a special flood zone hazard area. Should this rezon be approved, the applicant will then submit to a Development Review Committee to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations. Agencies included but not limited to Florida Department of Health, Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, St. John's River Water Management District, will review the plans to ensure development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Our aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. Wetlands. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Commercial General C3 to Commercial Intensive C4. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, and meets the locational requirements of the Commercial Intensive Zoning District provided in the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. At the scheduled public hearing on April 10, 2024, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of the rezoning application. Questions?
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Can you go back to the, can you go back to the zoning map? Please? So all the pinks are a little confusing. C4, that's the only thing in that area that's requesting for a C4, everything else is C1 and C2?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And can you let us know why the denial, what, what was the idea of the denial for the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission was worried about the intended use on a small lot.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jennifer, that was my concern also. I voiced that by taking a trip out there and looking at this property, it's just a little sliver of property. And I remember when I first got here and we allowed for mobile home repair to be done on-site at a location like this. I'll just be very frank, it's turned into a fiasco in some places, it's an eyesore. And this is our corridor coming into Putnam County right here, from the north and going to the south. I just have real concerns that bringing that in here without proper buffering and all, I don't see how they can fit that on that little piece of property. And again, even if it's not that use, we're going to a more extensive use of a C4. I just don't see, I don't see that. So I don't see how you can buffer, I don't see how you can landscape enough. I don't see when you have a big double-wide mobile home, how you're gonna fit that on that property. And that's a concern of mine. So, any other questions?
Not until after we hear it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Please come up and state your name. An address for the record, please?
Hello, do you need my home address or the office address?
Just whatever, yeah.
Okay, Jean Bramlett, 1086 US Highway 17, Bostwick. So I know you guys are saying that it's a small lot. I have seen other mobile, I'm not trying to do, I'm also a licensed installer, so I'm bringing homes into Putnam for the working-class people in your area, doing permits, I actually knew them from the Building Department, from pulling permits before I even decided to bring my business to Putnam County. I have drew, I don't know if y'all can see this little thing, but you know, I'm trying to get my dealer's license, that way there's not a bunch of used homes up there. And I only plan to put two, maybe four at the most at a time, because I spend my time really installing homes. But as far, I would love to spend the 10 to 15,000 to put the fence up, to make it look beautiful up there, but I'm not gonna spend the money thinking that there's any way I can get denied. So, that's where I'm at on that.
Thank you. My question, basically, if you heard me speak just a minute ago, was that this zoning runs with the land. So whatever, if you decide later on down the road you don't want to do this mobile home, sales or repair there, then the property still have a C4 designation put up, left on it for someone else to use. So you see the struggle with that little sliver of land, but that's my comment. So Commissioner Turner, you had something?
Yeah, yes, sir. I didn't have any questions, but my comments run precisely with what your concerns are. C4 is way too intense for this area, we got C1 and C2 with no C4 anywhere in sight, you can't shoot a gun and hit C4 from there. I have tremendous concern. In East Palaca, on the, we were asked to, a few years ago, to put a, take a piece of property and change it to C4 for the exact same thing that she's asking for right now. And we denied it. We denied it because we didn't want C4 along the 207, I mean, the 117 corridor between 207 and the bridge, that we were gonna do an overlay area in there and try to change it. My problem with this is if we put this intent of a zoning out there, and I wish the lady the best of luck in her ventures, but if it doesn't succeed, then we've got a piece of C4 land out there that you could put such an intense use on that it just wouldn't make any sense whatsoever. So I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna be able to support this just for that reason, it has nothing to do with you personally or anything else. It's just that that's way too intensive a zoning to have on a small sliver of land where there's no C4 around it anywhere in the area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Is it only mobile homes, or are you, are you also doing like portable buildings, sheds, that kind of thing?
At this point, it really depends on what my customer is wanting to move, because I have one in Clay County as well. So it just depends on, most of the time, it, the houses are parked there, waiting in transit, because their land's not ready or whatever. At this time right now, I'm not selling anything, whatever's up there is just waiting for people to clear land in Putnam County to put their home there.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay.
But again, Mr. Chairman, if I may, but again, it doesn't, it's not what they're wanting to do with it that bothers me as much right now as what they could do with it under C4 in that area. That's a very intense, I mean, that's almost industrial-type uses. It, it could just turn into a real, it could turn into a junkyard, it could turn, there's so many things that it could turn into by right under C4, or especially with C4, that gives them the opportunity to go and get a variance, and even get more intense than it even is already for other uses that are even worse. So I just, I just can't get there on this one, I just can't get there.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett.
Thank you, you guys have a good day.
No, I, I agree, with the size of the property, and then it really concerns me of, you know, it's not this use is what can be used, like you made the point that the zoning runs with the land, not with a particular owner or operator of the business. So I have the same concerns as everybody else has.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Ashley's bringing a card. Thank you. Ray K. Watley, Watley? Okay, please come up. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
My name is Ray, my name is Ray K. Watley. My husband and I, Paul Watley, we reside at 107 Price Street. Our residential property is the property most impacted by rezoning of this property. We're right on the other side of the railroad tracks, and our property runs right next to this property that we're talking about today. And I'm here today, and believe me, my husband and I have worked, we still work full-time, we're 71 years old. We will die in the house that we live in, we bought it, it's owned outright, we intend to go nowhere. My husband was a small business owner for, that worked in Putnam County for about 20 years in two various businesses, so you know, we're, we have solid ties to the community. I'm new, relatively new, I've only lived here for six years. The property, I, I gave you guys a handout, and I'm sorry, I didn't make quite enough copies, I hope you can share, that has a few pictures, but the points that I wanted to cover today are these. First, your concern is my concern too, the first thing that comes to mind is the size of the lot is way too small and intensive for the intended use. You saw on the map up there, the, the dimensions of the property. So the square footage kind of belies it, because you have that little tiny sliver area where it's not big enough for them to put actually a trailer on, I don't believe. The average dimensions of a double-wide mobile home can vary, but they generally range in width from 20 to 32 feet. A lot of these are double wides that have been on this property so far. And the length can be anywhere from 40 to 80 feet. So that translates, and this is worst-case scenario, up to 25, 60 square feet per unit. The square footage of that acreage is approximately 29,621 square feet. And that doesn't include the area that they need for the office and for parking, and to be setback from the highway there. Also, you had mentioned that this is the gateway in and out of Putnam County there, and there's been a lot of people that have moved into this little neighborhood here. We're all doing our best to make this eclectic community more showcase, especially for when the Blueberry Festival comes out there, people drive, I've had people park in my yard for the Blueberry Festival, I'm that close. I'm also worried that the condition of the properties that they bring in is mostly looks like that they are, have been not taken care of for a long time, possibly condemned. So, there's, there's roofs that are coming off, there's windows that are broken. There's enough foliage in the area that hasn't been cleared by other property owners that, you know, I'm worried about vermin. It's kind of an invitation to vagrants that are walking up and down the highway. And they do do small repairs out there. I noticed that that is not part of the intended use. I have seen them spray painting out there. I don't know if they were spray painting the building to improve the office or if they were spray painting the units, but I worry about that and maybe other possible hazmat issues. I have to leave the back of my property unkept to minimize the view. If you look at the pictures from, the first set of pictures, those are from my backyard. So, if I sit on my screened-in back porch and enjoy my one acre that I have there, I have that to look at.
Ms. Watley, I was, I should have reminded you that we give three minutes.
I'm sorry, three minutes. Anyway, everything else is, and everything's in the handout. I'm sorry. Very nervous when I speak.
Thank you so much. I do have a question for Zach though.
Not me.
No, ma'am, you're fine. These pictures reminded me that the mobile homes are there now. So, with this being, in the zoning, the current zoning, mobile homes are not allowed there right now.
That's correct. Yes, sir. This is the result of a code enforcement case.
I'm a little offended. I mean, not by you, but you, somebody's wanting to rezone and they already got? I'm just, never mind. Thank you. I just don't think that that's right, but.
But it is a valid, it's a valid point.
I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but just so you understand our process. There are many, many times where something comes in from a code enforcement complaint where our planning and zoning department tries to get people into compliance. So, that's actually a normal process for us.
Still doesn't sit well. It's a hard pill to swallow when you know you don't have the zoning and you're coming in here, and there's pictures to prove that you don't have the zoning.
Especially when you're this far out of compliance.
Yes.
This isn't just a little out of compliance. This is way out of compliance.
Well, that ends our public hearing if no one else is here to speak. So, we'll close the public hearing portion. And Board, what's your pleasure on this?
Chairman, I move that we take the recommendation of the planning commission and deny this case.
Proper motion to deny. Do we have a second? Proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I lit my light.
Mr. Adamsack?
I just wanted to add that the, the main reason beyond the fact that it, I don't think it's an appropriate use, even with the intended use, is the safety concern I had too. I was visualizing, I went out there and I saw where all the mobile homes were, and there really is no turn in or turn off on that on the main road either. It's way, it's before the property and after the property. So, there's the whole idea of how do you get them in and out if you actually were doing a lot of business there too. So, I think it also takes into account the safety of our residents out in that way too. So, thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Wilkinson, any other floor?
I just think the, it's too intensive for that small of a lot, and it doesn't seem consistent with the C1 and C2 in the area. So, that's why I would be against it. It's, it's definitely not consistent with what's in the area.
Okay, we have a proper motion, proper second. We're gonna call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The application was denied. We're gonna take a three-minute break. Mr. Turner?
Before you do, I want to say one more thing. Zach, this goes where from here? Code enforcement?
That's correct, sir. We'll notify code enforcement of the results today, and they can resolve that case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Three-minute break. All right, we're gonna reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting and go into our public comments on agenda items. And do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak on agenda items only? And seeing no one run up here, then we will close the public meeting part of our agenda items and go into consent agenda. I will start on my right is Commissioner Adamsack. Is there any items you want to pull?
I have none.
Mr. Turner?
I have none.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Well, I'm not gonna be the odd man out here. I have none either.
How did you know I didn't have any?
I didn't have any.
And I don't have any. So, the chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
We have a proper motion, proper second. Hearing any further, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. And just want to bring your attention that County Road 315 is gonna get started from 20 to 100. Guys, that's been a long time coming, so thank you very much, and thanks staff for, for working diligently with FDOT and getting that done and, and moving that forward in this board. That's gonna be a very good project for Putnam County. Next on our agenda is item seven, is codes enforcement, page 149. Mr. Moore, you're here.
Could you ask, is there anybody?
Is the applicant here? Is any of the applicants in the room for any of these two code cases? I don't see anybody. Nope, there's no one in the room. Mr. Turner, do you have a pleasure?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, with regard to code case 2011 00572, I move that we take staff recommendation of $5,648 if paid within 90 days.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. I do want to say the reason that one is high for our public watching is there was an abatement cost of $3,500 that the citizens paid for, and now that's gonna go back into the county coffers. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to code case 2005 606, 1886 County Road 308, I move that we take staff recommendation of $1,584 if paid within 180 days.
Second.
Now, a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioners, any appointments? Mr. Adamsack?
I have none.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir. I'm going to appoint Chip Lible to the Solid Waste Adjustment Committee. Our meeting's going to be tomorrow morning at 9:00.
That's not on the list.
Is that a district appointment, or is that something we need to vote?
Oh, sir, but the board, the board said that I could appoint him.
Yep.
As chairman of the Solid Waste Committee, so I still got to come up with one more, but this one here for tomorrow morning.
So, I believe that we'll just wave in support. Is that what we'll do? Okay, let's vote to confirm. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it.
That's all I have today, sir.
And Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Ms. Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none. So, the next item on our agenda will be item nine, procurement surplus properties. Who's got that? Julianne, do you have that?
There was one property being offered donation to the Board of County Commissioners. In that packet, the property details are included. There was not a department that recommended retention of the property or recommended to accept it. So, staff's recommendation or staff sees no reason to retain the property at this time. However, staff is requesting the board's direction.
Thank you. And just for the general listening public, excuse me, the staff does look at these parcels when people are trying to give them to us, or they eschew to us, or they come to us from other reasons. We look at them for drainage, for roads and, and infrastructure, but in most cases, somebody's trying to give you a, a horse that needs attention. And this is something that we have to be very mindful of, accepting donations that might end up costing the county money in the future. So, Board, what's your pleasure on this?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we decline this kind of offer.
Second.
Okay, we have proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Next on the business is request to advertise for a public hearing to vacate undeveloped rights of way in McLaurie subdivision. Who's got that? Zach, do you have that? Brian?
No, that's, that's public works. I'll, I'll take a stab at it. It might need Mr. Stout to help me. But this is a request from the owner to vacate a road to set a public hearing, so there's no action today other than to set a public hearing. We have not had any, anything turned in from the adjacent property owners, and anybody that has is all agreed to vacate the section of road. So, we just need to push it forward to a public hearing.
There is a gentleman in the audience that would like to speak about this, so I would ask you to come down now. And again, this is just a request for us to go to public hearing. At that point, you would have another bite at the apple. How big is this property? Would we have to have two, or it's, it's okay.
I can find it.
We can figure it out. Go ahead, sir. State your name and address for the record. We're gonna keep you to three minutes if you don't mind, okay?
My, my name is Ezra Henson. My address is 142 McLaurie Drive, Palaka, 32177. And what, what my concern is, is that where my property is and that where the, where the right of ways are, my house is, is almost right in the middle of one of them. And they're talking about closing them, and there's a, there's another piece of property that's, that's beside me that someone else owns. And if they, they close that right of way right there, they're, they're not gonna be able to go in there to their property. And, and I don't know who they are and, and how to get in contact with them. But that's, that's my main concern right there, is, is how that right there is gonna go.
That'll be part of what they look at when it goes to public hearing. I don't think anybody's looked at any of that kind of stuff yet. But if you're concerned that we're gonna vacate a road that goes to your house, I don't believe you need to be concerned about that. I'd be very shocked if that happened. So, but this is just the first step to see if we can move in that direction. For them to look at it is all this is.
Okay.
All right. And then a public hearing would be advertised, signs would be posted. That's when the opportunity to come and, and really, you know, let us know if it's not already dealt with by the time it gets here.
Well, one of the things that, that I'm concerned about too is, is what they're gonna build in there, you know, because it's right in front of me.
Right, yes, sir. Okay. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate your comments, sir. Okay? Anybody else want to speak in the public? Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval to move this forward to a public hearing.
Second.
All right. We have proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Next on our agenda is our public works discussion, discuss options for covering funding. Who's got, Mr. Suggs, do you have that?
I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. As the, as directed by the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Stout and myself attended the city commission meeting last week. This item was on their agenda, and they voted unanimously to move it forward with a funding request. So, that's, this should be.
What do you need out of us today? Just a motion to move forward with the deal or what?
This is just an update, because this item was, was tabled last week. So, we're just giving an update to let you know that the project is gonna move forward, and the funding for that 64-plus thousand will be coming from the city.
Any, any motion from us to move this through?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
At this point, with the funding now in place.
We probably do need a resolution in a budget amendment.
To identify a budget location. So, we were already moving.
were already moving.
Yeah, everything's been done. We just needed the funding approval from the City of Palaka to cover that additional cost, and we got that last week.
So, we have the resolution and the budget amendment all in play?
Well, that's going to come. The City of Palaka has to furnish us something, and then we will prepare a budget resolution for you.
Thank you.
But it's not going to, I guess my question is, it's not going to hold, y'all cutting me off with it.
No, no, no.
It's not going to hold the project up even further. We can go ahead and move forward while some of this paperwork's being done now that the city has graciously agreed to partner with us.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
You'll see a follow-up resolution, but it will not halt the project. Big T and his crew will have the ability to-
The only thing I want to be sure of wasn't going to hold it up.
Right.
Good deal. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner, I don't think a couple of beefs would stop you anyway, okay? Just saying.
Yeah, but you gave Commissioner Wilkinson the button over there, so she's turning me off is what she's doing.
I don't think she would. All right, that ends our new business discussion, and we'll go into our public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow the citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect the Board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the Board has received no prior information. As part of the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits on the right of the podium, Ashley over here. So, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on miscellaneous items? And we have one card, Sandra Berry. And I remember seeing you on the side of the road not too long ago, right? Ms. Berry, keep in mind, you've got three minutes.
Okay, my name is Sandra Jollyberry, and I reside at 323 Palm Street in Interlock. And I am just coming to present a concern. We recently moved to the area, and our daughter had gotten lost because we had no street signs, and it took us over 25 minutes to find her. She had no landmarks, no nothing. So, and I apologize, I'm not a public-
Oh, you're fine.
You're doing great.
You're doing fine, don't worry.
So, I would really like to see at least getting road signs put up in our development so that we don't lose people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And not to debate, but I did, you probably saw me on the news the other day.
Yes.
And the Citizens Committee from the MSBU is looking at the street signs as we're speaking now. We have had cases where we put street signs up and immediately they're taken down. And it's-
Well, I would like to also see some better police in that area.
We've talked about something-
We don't ever see anybody-
Yep.
-come out and be told.
And they do. The Sheriff's Department's out there, but it's a big area.
Yes.
It's a huge area, and it's, there's a lot of challenge. But it's not just that area, trust me. They're all over Putnam County. We all have challenges in every district, so. But thank you, Ms. Berry, for coming forward today.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public wishing to speak? Please come up and state your name. Mr. Hagy, just a second. Mr. Hagy, hang on. A lady in the back had raised her hand, so please, you're on deck, sir. You're on deck. Please, if you will, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I'm Cassia Oxendine. I'm 117 Georgetown Short Cut Road, Crescent City. I'm here for special consideration for the ship program, but my concern is that you have to go to AHAC first and then come back to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval. And from my understanding right now, the next AHAC meeting is July 10th, I think it is. And then I come back to the Board for approval. So, my concern with this is that I turned in a complete package on the 19th, the first day that the applications were to be-
Ms. Oxendine, you got approved today.
Um, no, that's my sister.
Oh, that's your sister. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yes, that's her. About 27 years ago, I made a purchase with the ship program and bought a house, and I satisfied that commitment. Now, they're saying that I'm not eligible, so they sent me a certified letter on me first thing. I was denied. And so, now I have to wait and go to AHAC, come back, and by that time, the funds could possibly be depleted. So, I'm just trying to see if there's a better way to reach the AHAC committee going forward for other participants or applicants.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments today.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pickens?
We're going to address that. That's the process, as far as I understand. I'll have Julianne maybe elaborate, but we do meet once a quarter on the AHAC committee. And those individuals that we saw that we approved today, they came to the last meeting and made that request, and then we have to send it to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, which we did. Julianne, I don't know if there's another way to circumvent that process.
To current or to current point, there is not another way. The AHAC committee has to make a recommendation that they would approve you to reapply since you've been a recipient in the past. Then that committee recommendation would go to the Board of County Commissioners, and then you would have eligibility at that point. That is the AHAC process. That's why that AHAC exists, that citizen board, in part.
And that process is outlined in our, we have a local housing assistance plan here called the ALHAB, and we can't violate that. We have to follow that because then that's approved by the state through Florida Housing. So, this is the process and kind of the concept in going back before AHAC, as Commissioner Pickens knows, is to make sure that there's not other people that were in line before you ask for a second effort for assistance.
Right, I understand, but I was just wanting to bring it to your attention to see if there was any way that we could possibly in the future. But I understand, it's already outlined.
Right.
And I was here before-
I don't think they're going to run out of money.
That, oh, okay. So, I'll wait and see. And another question, how do I get on the AHAC committee?
So, when there's a vacancy, applications are posted on the county website, and then they're reviewed for that vacancy, and they come before the Board for consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Oxendine.
Thank you, Ms. Oxendine.
Thank you. Is there anybody, Mr. Hagy, you were walking up here a minute ago, so please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Hagy, 112 Paul Drive.
Pull that microphone up to you if you'd like. You don't have to bend down.
There you go.
112 Paul Drive Hollister. I was just curious about these signs that are missing. Are they all kind of in one area? I mean-
No.
No.
They're, I mean, I don't know for a specific place where, you know, so it's all just scattered, huh?
They're everywhere.
All right. Well, I was just wondering about that, so. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one jump up, we're going to close our public comment on miscellaneous items and go into the clerk of the court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. First, want to apologize for last meeting. I didn't give you guys an update. We got the, the last fiscal year, the books closed and that information over to the auditors, so the external auditors are working on that, and they should be, at that time, when I talked to them a couple of weeks ago, they were still planning to be done by June 30th. So, we have another update with them today, and if anything changes, I'll be sure to update the Board.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
As you go through this process and as you make different milestones, even though they're not 100%-
Sure.
-reliable yet as far as being audited figures, could we make sure that we reach out to Ms. Young, our budget officer, who's one of the titles that she carries? And I'm very concerned this year, as I've already told you before now, that we're way behind in the process from previous years.
Yes, sir.
Because, for a lot of valid reasons, but I would, I'd really like to see us try to at least update the information as it becomes reliable to Ms. Young.
Absolutely.
And if any way possible, like I said, I'm really concerned that we're behind eight ball this year.
Well, if you'll remember, this year, we have a new audit firm, new external audit firm, that didn't actually get in place. They were very, very late. I was concerned with how late we did procurement on that. But moving forward with them in, I believe it was October, we got them the information as soon as we could get it to them, and we had some turnover in our finance department, too, that I'm working on fixing that as well. But yes, sir, I'm concerned about the timing as well, sir.
I'm not trying to be critical, and like I just said-
I understand. I'm not either.
It's very valid reasons, and I knew what the reasons were.
Sure.
I just want to make sure if there's any way possible that as you get additional information that becomes more credible than what the information's out there now, that you have somebody reach out to Ms. Young and try to give her that information.
Sure.
We're fixing to have her in a bad spot, is what we're fixing to have here pretty quick.
Trust me, I did that. I completely understand how tough that spot's going to be. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Commando?
I don't have anything. I think Commissioner Pickens is going to address the things I was thinking about.
Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Just a reminder that June 12th through the 14th, myself, Ms. Young, Mr. Sullivan, and I believe the Chair and Vice Chair are going to be in DC for representing Putnam County. And then the week of June 25th, I think it is, through 28th, will be in Orlando as well, representing the county at the Association of Counties Conference.
We have a board meeting that week, don't we?
I'm going to get to that.
Well, I was fixing to get to it.
Go right ahead, sir.
You want me to, or would you like to, sir?
Go right ahead, sir.
I think we need to decide today and not at the next meeting if we're going to have that meeting or not, to where we either, anybody that's scheduled to go to the second meeting in June, if they're ready, move them up and not put them off a whole other meeting or a whole other meeting, or, excuse me, a whole lot, another meeting or two after. So, I'll make the motion because so many people are not going to be here. I'm even concerned about having a quorum that day at the county commission meeting, because I know that you're going to be gone, Commissioner Wilkinson's going to be gone, Mr. Commando's going to be gone, Julianne's going to be gone, probably, I don't know if JR's going to be or not, but Terry's going to be gone, so basically, everybody's going to be gone except for Commissioner Pickens and myself, and I'm not sure about Commissioner Adamsak. But if y'all let us have a meeting without you, that'd be fine. We'd do whatever we wanted to do.
Might be a little scary, but that's-
I think I'll make the motion that we don't have the second meeting in June.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
The only thing that I want to add to that is make sure that we talk to the people that were scheduled for the second meeting in June, and if there's any way we can, let's move them up to the first meeting in June instead of putting them off if we can.
I agree.
Good. Mr. Suggs, you serve the floor?
That's all my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I'll wait for Mr. Pickens to address those.
Well, then I'll start with Commissioner Adamsak, then.
I guess Tony and Mr. Stout, if you can come up, I want to talk about something. And then, in the meantime, while they're coming up, as far as the weekend, there's a lot of activities this weekend. We had, I went to the boat racing on Friday, actually, before they had the event, so we got to actually check out the boats and do all that stuff down in Crescent City. I overheated when I attempted to go to the Blue Crab, so I didn't stay for very long. I think just with my injury that I had, that I was getting over, just the walk that I took from where I parked to there, just it was not sustainable for me to stay, so I went home and cooled off. But great weekend. Obviously, Memorial Day weekend is very important as well, and just want to thank everyone in the community that participated in all the different events. The reason why I called these guys up is our MSBU, Interlock and Boulevard, really is on the brink of running out of money, and kind of we run into that situation. I think last year, we ran into the same type situation before you were here, Tony. And we discussed the potential, I don't know what the process is, so I just wanted to talk about in front of the whole commission, of actually upping our MSBU fee in that MSBU to be able to cover that. And I just wanted to say that I'm supportive of that. I just want to know what the process would look like and to see if we could get the commission to agree that that would be okay. Because basically, the citizens are calling with a lot of wants and a lot of things, and all the ones that we've talked to have said, at 20-some dollars a year, we're fine with it going up because of the fact that they need to fix a whole bunch of potholes and different issues all throughout that whole community, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
In the past, if I remember correctly, and please, you're the MSBU guru here, so in the past, I believe what we've done is we've gone out for bids in these things of the work that we looked, that we thought they were going to do. And then we tried to base the MSBU fees on covering the amount of work that the committee or the committee thought they were going to do in the year upcoming. Is there something changed there?
Yeah, we don't have a committee because no one wants the volunteer to be on a committee. They just want to call.
Well, by statute, I mean, by our ordinance, if there's no committee, Tony, the MSBU coordinator runs that. But Commissioner Turner's right. There's a process, Rich, if I'm not mistaken, to raise the MSBU, we send out letters to those affected people inside the MSBU stating that this next fiscal year, the Citizens Committee or lack thereof recommends this because the work's not getting done. We're not collecting enough money for the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, we haven't sent out those notices yet. We're in conversations with that, but looking at the work that needs to be done in that area. They do need to go up at least 50%, if not more, because of the amount of material that we need to bring in.
Okay, so let me ask this. Julianne, you're the budget person. We have timeframes to hit, but I mean, I'm sure with you and Rich, you can come together and give some ideas of when those letters need to go out and-
Right. We traditionally do all MSBU adjustments at one time in the beginning of the, or as the budget season progresses. I'm assuming Commissioner Adamsak just kind of wanted to start having this conversation since he knows this is going to be-
Yes.
-a significant need. So, what will happen is the committee and/or staff will estimate what the budgetary need is, then we'll divide that to determine what the proposed fee is. And there's a couple of different times it comes back before this Board, before that final fee is set. And the residents are obviously notified if the increase happens.
So, you'll be looking at all the MSBU, all eight or nine of them, I think?
Yeah, we'll be looking at all of them, but there's only a few that really need to be going up on their rates.
Right.
Well, I'm hoping that the one there in San Mateo could actually come down this year.
Yeah, we've actually been talking about that as well.
All right.
The amount of work that's done in there, we can get by with lowering their rates.
Well, I think the important thing for the listening public and people in our audience to know, we didn't have this capability up until just a few years ago. The rate was the rate. It started back in the 1990s, some of them did, and we never changed that rate. The Board's never changed that rate. So, when we got together, as this Board decided that we needed a variable rate, we needed something that could go up or go down based on the work that was getting done. And this Board stepped up to the plate and made that happen. Very important. I mean, how, you know, cutting services is not the right idea, and that's what was taking place in these MSBU's, especially West Putnam MSBU. You know, we can't do that road, we don't have enough money, we're not going to do it anymore. That's not fair to the people who are paying, and they call it a tax, but it's actually a fee, a fee to get the roads done. And I paid the same fee. I paid the grading fee, and I paid the paving fee. So, it's no different than what, we knew that our little one mile for per commissioner a year wasn't going to cut it. So, we decided we were going to ante up and pay. And it was hard, but we all did it. So, Commissioner Adamsak, I applaud you for bringing that to the attention.
Julianne said the point is just to make everyone aware that that's the intention.
Yes, I get it.
We do recognize the shortfall. We recognize the work that needs to be done. They're putting together a plan for what that's going to cost to go through the process, and we were one of the MSBU's that lowered, for some reason, like a dollar or something. So, I don't know why we lowered, but that's just how it worked out.
Sure.
And we've had some good meetings with Commissioner Adamsak out on site and gotten some things fixed, where we were able to come in and help as just public works department. But the rates do need to go up to make things better for them.
You'll look at all of them and come back with a recommendation for-
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Mr. Adamsak?
That is all I have.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I guess I get to be the first one to congratulate the ladies softball out at the St. John's River State College.
Yeah.
World champions. Hopefully, next meeting, we'll be also congratulating the men's baseball team. Hopefully, they're successful this week as the ladies were last week. So, I can't believe I got to do it. I figured somebody else would beat me to it this morning. And that's all I had today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. I'd like to commend Mitch Atwell. Mitch came to a meeting, a couple of meetings ago, and requested some help with emergency service for the drag boat races that he was trying to put together.
service for the drag boat races that he was trying to put together for the first time in Crescent City. And actually, information from JR, they're able to hire, uh, a private company to take care of that. That was the missing link to complete that. And that's what I'm gonna say, uh, with, along with Mayor Myers and, and Administrator, um, city administrator Charles Rudd, uh, with Mitch and his team, they put together a very, very successful event. I went by water with my family, and there were probably at least fifty, sixty boats anchored offshore watching these boats. The farmer's market was the same day, so it was up at the center of Crescent City. So a lot of activity in that area, and, and Marjory Neal Nelson Park is where they staged. Um, I did not get a ride in one of these boats. I don't know that I want one, but it's pretty impressive to see a boat on a slow-running start and an eight-hundred feet reach a hundred and thirty-five miles an hour. Um, so anyway, I just want to commend Mitch for bringing something to Putnam County that we hadn't seen or never seen in Crescent City. We've seen the round-around races, but not drag boat races. So, and the second thing is, uh, Mr. Commando said, I'm not about to give the county any legal advice at all, but, uh, and I hope that he chimes in along with Administrator Suggs and Julianne, former graduate of St. John's River State College, it's probably a community college back then, and former softball player, correct. So what they have done, and I want to commend President Pickens, which y'all know is my brother, uh, athletic director and head coach, uh, baseball coach Ross Jones, who hired his nephew, Joey Pound, and in just a short few years, when they went to Division Two, uh, junior college, uh, division, they have won the World Series, which I think is just a tremendous achievement. Um, hopefully, when we recognize them next meeting, they will show portions of that last game. I'm not gonna, if you haven't seen it, it is unbelievable how that game turned out. But they went to Greensville, Greenville?
Spartanburg.
Yeah, Greenville, Spartanburg, um, South Carolina. They actually played near Greenville. Uh, my brother graduated from Wofford College, which is in Spartanburg, uh, so it was kind of a homecoming to him. Um, but anyway, and the boys are in Oklahoma. Um, they will play their third game tonight at eight PM, and, uh, they have already won the first two games. So they are poised and positioned, uh, maybe to go far in that, uh, division also. So that would be something to win two world championships in one year from one school. So, so that's all I have. So I hope that y'all add something, 'cause y'all went to the, um, when the players got back Sunday, they had a little, uh, welcome home, uh, deal for them. So if y'all would elaborate on it a little bit?
Uh, we did. We had the pleasure of going and meeting the girls as they arrived, and um, the girls were very touched. They had a police escort, which, um, many of the girls, I don't know if you got a chance to see, Joe, but many of the girls on their Facebook page, they were impressed having a police escort. And then they, when they got to the college, obviously, they had a number of community members there. Um, and many of the girls got off, um, even crying, just 'cause they're not from Putnam County. They don't, they didn't grow up in this community, so to have a community come out and support them after a victory is something. Um, but as Commissioner Pickens said, what these ladies did was they made history. And if you watch some of those games, um, like I did, you've got a few extra gray hairs, but they stayed with it, and, um, they persevered, and, and it showed off. And it was neat to see the community and the kids. I brought my daughter out who plays softball, and, um, she was a little bit starstruck, which was pretty neat to see. So it was an accomplishment for all of them.
It was. It was a fantastic opportunity. And, and Chairman, thank you for notifying us, uh, yesterday of that opportunity. Uh, and like Ms. Young said, just watching their faces when they got off that bus with the folks that was there holding the signs of congratulating them, it was just, uh, one of those moments that you just were proud to, uh, not only to be there, but be a part of, but for them as well. Because I did watch that, the, uh, the ending of the game, and it was phenomenal. It just was. And Commissioner Pickens, I took the, uh, opportunity to text President Joe Pickens yesterday. And I've actually, I've texted with him a few times since this, but, but yesterday, that time, I said, what a, what a charmed life he seems to be leading, living right now with the fact that his girls just won the World Series, his boys are in the World Series, and his alma mater is playing in the, uh, NCAA regionals, uh, for a chance to go to the World Series as well. So, uh, yeah, when I grow up, I wanna be just like Joe. And, uh, you know, so, uh, I told him to enjoy the moment because it's absolutely well-deserved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, having the honor of serving on the college board gave me an opportunity to kind of see their progression throughout the, throughout the year, and to really see them meet challenges that, I mean, as Julianne, that gave you some gray hair. So, you know, when you're watching them see, when they're playing against the number-one seed with Parkland, and honestly, just took them out. Uh, no question about it, they just had the strength to work through. And, um, President Pickens made the comment that, you know, they're, they're gritty. I mean, they just never quit fighting. So as you're watching that championship game, and you see the other team hit a homerun and an RBI come in, your heart just kind of stops. But that didn't deter them at all. They just kept fighting, and they fought all the way back for the win. So, I mean, I'm, I'm proud of our, our young ladies. And, uh, I told President Pickens, I really do hope we have a parade. I hope it's a joint parade with the baseball team, too. I think that's something that they've earned and the recognition that we can give to them. And I'm certain there'll be a proclamation to go along with that. But, uh, to have the support from this commission and the community is part of what makes it so special for them. So thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
One, one, yep, and I have a comment for it when you get...
I'm on the Athletic Association at the college, and for years, we've been working very hard to improve the program out there. We'd go, we'd be remiss if we didn't, uh, mention Ms. Joey Oliver, the work that she's done, and, and the training facility that she provided, and the community did, for those young ladies to have a, a state-of-the-art place to practice that. That, Julianne, that wasn't what you were, when you were there. And, um, but I said on the radio this morning, you know, getting there is one thing, winning's another, but the preparation to even get to that point. Any of us who played youth sports, you played it from the time you're old enough. And, you know, there was times you thought, should I quit? Should I just, what am I doing here? These girls didn't stop. And you're right, when they got off the bus, it was moving. And I tell you the most moving thing, probably a little hokey, um, autographs. Your daughter was getting autographs, and one young lady said, you didn't get mine. And that moved me so much that this young girl was, all these kids were getting them, and she didn't want your daughter to be left out. And I just thought, you know, there's so much going on at that moment, but for her to care about your daughter, she didn't know your daughter. She just knew she didn't sign that piece of paper. And that meant a lot, because all of us elected officials, we go home after an event, we go, I should've said that, and I wish I'd have said that, and I should've done this. And we wish it, we wish ourselves away sometimes. But she was in that moment. And, uh, those kids, your daughter might grow up to play and remember because of that moment in her life. And that just moved me a lot. So we are, the first meeting in June, we're gonna send out an invite to them to come and hopefully have the boys and the girls here and celebrate two wins. But anything like that, that can promote Putnam County is, is, you can't buy that advertisement, but it's wonderful for this community. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, for letting me say so.
Okay. Thank you for all those comments. Um, I do want to add, I want to thank Colonel Joe Wells, even not that he's here, um, for their efforts with the boat races and actually, you know, patrolling, uh, all the different events, uh, this weekend, from the Blue Crab to the events in Crescent City. And I want to thank, there was a, a citizen who watches, I guess, quite a few of our meetings. I'm not gonna mention that person's name, but they were impressed with Mr. Atwell's, uh, presentation the other day and requesting for, uh, assistance from the county, which we just could not provide. And they made a donation and, and found some donations for him. So I want to thank that individual. You know who you are. And, uh, so that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of comments. So, uh, regarding the signs that are missing, that is not something that is unique to Interlock and Lake Estates, I can assure you. I live in the Barden community, and when I first got elected, I was, one of the first things I said to this commission was, what is going on with the signs? They're all coming up missing. Um, my husband is a master mechanic, and we were behind a vehicle one day, and out of the back of the tailpipes were two, two posts that looked like they could have been a county sign at one point. So I don't know what people are doing with them. It is an issue that's across the county. Um, we go out and replace them, and then it's not, you know, I don't know if we need to put some Loctite on the bolts, if we need to put a tag on them so we can find out and follow who's, who's stealing them. Um, but I don't think it's one individual. I don't know what it is. I used to think it had to do with, you know, street names, and so if you had a street named Wilkinson, and you were a Wilkinson, you might take a Wilkinson sign. But it's not necessarily that. Um, I think it's just, uh, people are, I don't know if they're playing, I don't know what it is, but it's, it is an issue. So I don't want you to think it's just in your area. It is something that we, uh, we're aware of, Public Works is aware of, and so is the Sheriff's Office.
It's not just unique to Putnam County either.
Okay.
Taylor County was just as bad. I put in a subdivision over there, and I named the roads after my grandchildren. You could not keep a sign of it, because other people had those children's names, and they would come take the signs down within two days after you put them up.
Well, we can, maybe we can put some Loctite or weld them or something, so they're not so easy to remove. Um, anyway, uh, moving on, uh, we do want to mention that we, the county had applied for the spay and neuter, uh, grant, and we did not get that grant. And so, um, I don't believe any agency in Putnam County got the grant. I don't think it's just us. I think there just wasn't enough money. Did we, the spay and neuter program, we did not get that grant. Um, so I would like staff to see if there's any other grants that we can apply for, because it's something, the spay and neuter program is something that we definitely need to see if there's some funding for, maybe from another resource, because, um, Commissioner Adamsak and I have, went to one meeting, and I think there's gonna be some more meetings, um, regarding animal services and what the citizens want to see in Putnam. And one of them, the very first thing is, we need to have some more spay and neuter programs. And I know we're working with, uh, Ms. Jenny down in South Putnam for the mobile clinic, and I'm very appreciative of that. But then I just feel like we need to have a, something else. If there's other grants, let's look for them. Let's turn over every rock we can to find whatever else is available for, uh, that kind of program. And, um, I just want to mention to staff, I appreciate, and I don't know if you're having this conversation, Commissioner Harvey, but I do want to say to staff, thanks for cleaning up the outside of the Ronnie Clark, Clark Building downtown. And, uh, we're doing a lot in Putnam County to try to improve Putnam County and promote Putnam and improve downtown. A lot of great things going on. The Blue Crab Festival was a big success, and I want to thank everybody who worked on that. And we're just, a lot of positive things going on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. And I do want to say, um, I was honored to be at the American Legion in, in Locken yesterday, opening the ceremonies for Memorial Day and the flag burning, uh, flag retiring event, which was very moving. Um, do want to bring your attention, in your box, you have a community hospice invite to, uh, June eleventh for a program they're having. I did, I was able to take the news reporter from First Coast News out to West Putnam MSBU, um, explaining to him the process of the MSBU's, the elevations in West Putnam is the hard thing to deal with. And he was driving, we were driving down Twin Lakes Road, and he says, my ears just popped. And I said, yeah, you're in the highest point in Putnam County out there. So he understood some of the, those challenges of that. Uh, and I assured him that we never tore up a asphalt road out there. They've been dirt from the time, time began. Uh, but the, the reality is ninety-five miles of dirt roads in that one MSBU. And if we're looking at our current pricing of nine hundred to a million dollars a mile, where does that come from? And when you do just the math, it's seven hundred dollars per person, per year, for fifteen years. That's a lot. So seeing that, that we've got some challenges, we're looking in that area, but we've got challenges everywhere in this county. Uh, do want to say that it's getting hot, and if you notice, it's not even August yet, and the other day was extremely hot. So please be careful, hydrate, take care of yourself, and anything we can do to help. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.